I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here tonight and everyone who's watching us at home. Very briefly, I will go through our agenda for this evening. We originally had two items on the consent agenda. Item B is going to be pulled off the consent agenda and we'll hear it as a regular item. And then we have a, which is the, so the consent agenda will be the minutes from the November 11th meeting. And then we'll have the final plat from Lakeside at Chapman Farms. And then we'll have a site plan and design review for Price Chopper North. That being said, we'll move first to the minutes from the November 11th meeting. Do I have any discussion and/or motions on that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. And we need to pull, the reason we had to pull the final plat off of the consent agenda was the staff needs to add an extra condition to their report. So, Mr. Allen, if you would like to go over that and we'll see if the applicant wants to comment on it.
Sure, I will try to keep this brief, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. With the request for Lakeside Chapman Farms' second plat, the applicant has been working on constructing the trail that's related to this portion of Lakeside development in Chapman Farms. They have not yet completed that as of tonight, so therefore, we do need to add an additional condition. And speaking with their engineer, they would be amenable to this. The condition would be a condition number five. Tract H, which is the public open space, Track H Trail Improvements must be installed or a financial guarantee posted prior to releasing the final plat for recording with Jackson County. So, hopefully that applicant will have some time here in the next week or two. Again, the Planning Commission would hear this pending your recommendation next Monday, December 2nd. And at that time, it's customary that the city would release those back to the applicant to get recorded. But we'll just hold on those based on this condition pending a financial guarantee to be submitted to cover the completion of the remainder of the trail. Again, or they may in fact have it already completed by the time we get to that point. So, that's what staffers recommending. Again, did speak with the engineer and they seem to be able to that, but they are present here this evening, Mr. Chairman, in case they'd like to discuss that further or provide any other additional comments. But staff does not have any other comments beyond the request to add that condition to the four other conditions already provided.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allen? I guess not.
All right, thank you.
Would the applicant like to make a comment, or?
It's none, we're okay with it.
I talked to the city today, we're going to put up an Astro for the remaining part of the trail. The trail should be completely, we don't need to add anyway, but we will go ahead and put up an Astro.
Okay, that sounds great.
So we can get it recorded.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, motions concerning this final plat? Yes.
I move that we approve the final plat for Lakeside Chapman Farms' second plat, the plat of lot seven, Chapman Farms lot 5391 and Track H, and approve the four printed conditions and the addition of condition number five as read by staff.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That final plat will go on to the council next week. And that brings us to what would now be item number two, which is the site plan design review for an addition to Price Chopper North. And I believe Ms. Gowdy, you're going to do that for us.
Yes, I am.
Well, her name still says. I know. I respond to either.
I can't see that.
Congratulations.
Yes.
This application is for the Price Chopper North Site Plan Design Review Approval. It is a building expansion. It's approval for a 16,300 square foot building. Expansion with two and existing 61,200 square foot grocery store, and that does include the site improvements as well. The site is located at 1305 Northwest 7 Highway, which is more generally located on the west side of 7 Highway, north of Interstate 70 and Point Center. The, it is currently one lot, it's not planted. It is approximately 7.08 acres, and it is zone general business. This proposal again is to expand on the existing grocery store. The, with the expansion, the new square footage will be 77,500 square feet. Since this is over the 750 square feet, the code does require the Site Plan Design Review approval. In addition, since the expansion exceeds 25% of the existing floor area, the entire lot does have to be brought into conformance with the Unified Development Code. Plating is required, again, since there is development occurring on the site and is not currently planted. That is not being considered tonight, but preliminary and final plat approval is required prior to issuance of a building permit. We, there are currently two access drives along 7 Highway. There's one on the north end of the property as well as the south. Again, both are located along 7 Highway, they're not proposing any changes as far as widening those, but they are slightly modifying kind of the interior layout with an addition of the parking spaces and somewhat modified site circulation. A traffic study has been submitted and approved by the Public Works Department at this time. The study does recommend a southbound right turn lane, and that would be in the existing 7 Highway right away within the shoulder. Those improvements really just include some lane marking, so that would be coordinated with MODOT. And the city is accepting those improvements at this time. As far as parking, there are 264 proposed parking spaces for the grocery store. The UDC requires 310 parking spaces, but a variance was approved on November 13th that allowed for the reduction for the 264 parking spaces. There are 12 accessible spaces and only seven are required, so they are meeting that requirement. A five-foot sidewalk is required along 7 Highway and is shown on the site plan. The sidewalk has to be installed or a financial guarantee submitted prior to city council approval of the final plat. At this time, applicant has submitted an exterior lighting plan which meets most of the lighting standards except the light levels on the north property line. Those do exceed the maximum, the maximum levels, which is the area immediately adjacent to the commuter parking lot. So, the variance would be required if they cannot meet those standards. Otherwise, we would just review conformance administratively through the building permit process. As far as signage on the site, with the building expansion, some of the wall signage will be modified, but I've been informed that the pole sign will not be altered, so it is allowed to remain on the site. Any signs that comply with the sign code can be approved administratively. There is a proposed trash compactor which is located on the west side of the building. It's immediately adjacent to the loading/unloading area. A screen wall has been provided on the west side to screen it from the residential to the west, but there is no screening to the north. The UDC does require that dumpsters be completely screened from views on all sides, so that would be something that we would review prior to issuance of a building permit to meet those requirements. As far as landscaping, the applicant is requesting approval of an alternative compliance landscape plan because the landscape buffer to the east does not meet the minimum requirements. There are six existing pear trees which are located just outside of their property lines within the 7 Highway right away. The UDC does not allow us to include those towards meeting the minimum standards, but they do function as a buffer there. So if we include those, they do meet that buffer requirement. And all other landscape requirements have been met, so that's the only deficiency. There was, in talking with the Public Works Department, some concern with the type of trees proposed over the public water line, so we will just work with the applicant during the building permit phase to make sure that there's no, there is not any disruptions with the trees that are being proposed to be planted over the water line. Make sure that we maintain the proper number of plant units to meet that requirement. A stormwater port has been submitted as required and accepted by the Public Works Department. One stormwater detention basin is proposed on the west side of the site. It's in a undeveloped area of the site. There is one portion of that site of the detention basin that's actually in an existing easement that the new truck turnaround will encroach into, so we are asking that that area where the truck turnaround will be located be vacated prior to approval of the final plat, so that we can get that recorded with the final plat. We have some elevations up here. As you can see, most of the building expansion will affect the east and south elevations, which will be modified with those with the expansion. The existing precast walls are being changed from a gray to cream color, and that includes all of the elevations. And then the new precast walls will also, they will match the existing walls. It was noted that there was little variation as far as visual interest on the south, north, and west elevations, but we didn't see that as a concern due to, you don't really see this from any public right-of-way since it's set so far back. So we did have, most of the enhancements are on the east elevation, which extends 17 feet to the east and then an additional 30 feet to the south. The main entryway has been enhanced with two colors of brick veneer and a height-inform variation along the roof line from the rest of the facade. A covered walkway has been added to a majority of the front facade with two-colored brick veneer columns and canopies that extend from the main entryway. Red metal onions have been added above the canopies, which provide a contrast of colors, materials, and form. In addition, a split-faced block band extends horizontally along the main facade, which also provides some visual variation there. On the end caps, we see some enhancements as far as, they've added the red steel beam canopies, slugged roofs extending above the adjacent roof line, lighter color ephes and the windows on the south side, and then the recessed brick veneer on the north end there. As far as screening, they have shown roof screening, which is required per the code. Any additional screening as far as mechanical, we will be reviewing that with the building permit plans prior to issuance of the building permit. With that, staff recommends approval of the Site Plan Design Review application with nine conditions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for staff? Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come forward? Oh, I'm sorry, I had a question and then completely forgot about it. You said that the site has to go through a plating process.
Yes.
Do we need to, does that need to be included as a condition in any way?
Really, as far as, like, Site Plan Design Review, we typically don't, we would do this sometimes after plating phase. Typically, we just would hold it until a building permit. The final plat would be, we could issue it at that time once the final plat is approved. As far as a condition, don't know if we had it noted.
You've got a couple of conditions that refer to the final plat, but there isn't anything that actually says it has to be done prior to building permit or anything like that.
They can't start without a building permit.
I'm sorry?
They can't, they can't get a building permit without the final plat.
Okay. But we don't need to include that on here in any way?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other thing else? Okay, now, would you like to come up and make a presentation? Sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Arnie Tullock with Schaefer, Klein &amp; Warren, here representing Costantinos on their building expansion. We're in agreement with the nine conditions that have been presented, and if you have any further questions, we'll be glad to answer those. Other than that, we look to your approval.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Well, let's just clear things up for me.
Sure.
So the expansion is on the south side? The building is where the expansion's going to occur?
That is correct. There's a faint line that you can kind of make out on the south line where the existing building line is currently. And then our expansion took us out to within about 20 feet of the current property-owned plan as we began the design process. One of the things that we had to work through was a building code requirement that, for file protection, that we had to have a 40-foot distance between property line and building. So we negotiated with the church to the south of us and purchased a 20-foot strip of land from them. That piece of property is now owned by Costantinos, and it will be platted as a part of our plating of the overall project as we move forward.
And then the one drawing, excuse me, I saw was you're actually going to revise the east side of the building, the main entrance then?
That's correct. Yeah. New entryway and some enhancements on both corners of the building.
Any other questions?
Our architect is here, if you have an architectural question. Other than that, I didn't want to steal his thunder, but, other than that, that's it. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it, thank you.
Are you planning on being open throughout the whole process?
Yes, we are. Not only does this building addition take place, but there's an interior remodel that's being done in conjunction with it. We're going to try to get the building addition completed and get what's on the west side of the building moved over to the east side so that they can begin then a total remodel of the interior of the store. So it'll be, it'll be quite a nice improvement when they're completed with all their work.
But probably a headache in the middle.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Without a doubt.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bring it back up here for discussion. Any comments and/or motions on this Site Plan Design Review?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Price Chopper North Expansion, case file SPDR-10-13-4144 with the nine staff conditions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Site plan has been approved. Thank you. Look forward to seeing this.
We'll be back soon.
We'll be here. All right, and that brings us back to other business. And, Mr. Allen, I think you had some scheduling issues that we needed to discuss.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to go through the December calendar first, we can certainly do that. As already, as has already been decided due to lack of agenda items, the next Planning Commission meeting originally scheduled for December 9th has been canceled. The following week however, prior to the city council meeting on December 16th was when we'll have our next Conference of Plans Steering Committee meeting, and they'll be at 5:00 o'clock. So, look forward to keeping that moving along. Add a little break here in November while we worked on some of those, as targets and goals. You may have seen, hopefully, that may have, you have seen those, and hopefully have gotten comments back to us through Jim, who apologizes he could not be here tonight due to illness. But, anyway, looking at December 16th again, 5 o'clock for next year and committee meeting for the Comp Plan. The week before that though, the week that Planning Commission meeting has been canceled, hopefully you have some opportunity to participate in one or both of the evening meetings Tuesday or Thursday. We'll be looking at the north area for kind of these neighborhood meetings as well as the south area. We kind of looked at the central area with kind of a, let's say pilot project, but essentially kind of getting started back in September. And we're looking to do the other two areas, one in the north, one in the south concurrently. So, maybe depending upon where you're situated or where your evening may take you either of those two nights, feel free to stop by one or both. Again, running very similarly, that Tuesday, the 10th, will be kind of that initial presentation and dialogue with neighbors in those areas. And then the Thursday will be kind of a summary of their ideas as they're put together on paper during the day Wednesday. Wednesday will be essentially a workday, kind of a charrette style with the consultants working out of Blue Springs Christian Church. So, Blue Springs Christian Church is the south area location for the meetings, and that's where they'll kind of house all their stuff, so to speak. Colored pencils, pretty maps, so on and so forth. They'll be working on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. But again, they'll be presenting that on the north side on Thursday at the Blue Springs Eight Theater. And again, everything in the south is at the Christian Church. Tuesday night north is at Point of Hope Church, just south of the Price Chopper. So that's kind of a quick summary of December. We have taken off of the agenda the 17th, Tuesday the 17th, as our next Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioners Training, just because it would be quite a full December on top of all the holiday events we have going on, I'm sure, at work, at home, and elsewhere. So, we're looking at February 4th, if we can pencil that in. February 4th will be the Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioners Training. This is the struggle that we always have, not January 14th. We kept Karen in the dark, just to, just to see if she could catch up, and she couldn't. So, I apologize for that. So, scratch that off on the bottom there. Not January 14th, that is, that was our hope, but one of the, I believe it's Lee Summit has one of their meetings, there's city council or Planning Commission that night, and we're unable to do it. And then, there's similar, because there's a Monday holiday, Martin Luther King Junior Day, the 21st doesn't work, so you start all of a sudden, you're looking at February 4th, so. Sorry I pushed out so far, but February 4th, not January 14th, will be when we have Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioners Training. So, sort of kind of go on and on here, but that's, we have full calendar here coming up with, again, at your leisure, or leisure having you pronounce it, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, December 10th, 11th, and 12th. December 16th, Comp Plan Steering Committee. February 4th, Eastern Jackson County Planning Commissioner Training. And kind of as another note here, because February, speaking of which, is the deadline for getting registered for the National Planning Conference, which will be held in 2014 in Atlanta. We have room for one Planning Commissioner, as we have done for the last couple of years here. It's near the end of April, which is a little bit later than usual. It's usually been kind of early mid-April, but it's essentially the last week of April this time. So, not sure if that makes any difference for anybody, but certainly keep that in mind. I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of how you want to handle.
Well, right now, I think everybody kind of just be checking your schedules and seeing if...
April seems a long ways away.
April seems a long ways away, but I'm sure it won't be.
Yeah, February will be here pretty quick, and that's when we need to have final decisions.
And we'll probably open it up to someone who hasn't been initially, and then if that doesn't work out, then we'll...
If it makes any difference, I'll be attending along with our principal planner, Mike Peterman. So, we will be your chaperones or guests.
I think you were the chaperones the year I went, so.
That's very true. So with that, I did not mention December 23rd, but I'll defer to you, Mr. Chairman, how you want to handle that in terms of whether it needs to be canceled, I think primarily because of quorum issues. But there is a potential for having some applications come in yet this week. Because of the short week, the application deadline is Wednesday, but as of today, we do not have anything in, so.
But my understanding is you think there might be something coming in?
There may be something. We've been given preliminary indications from the O'Reilly Development Group, who's looking at the senior living facility on Amsted Parkway at Napoleon. They may be looking to move ahead with their applications here, perhaps as early as submitting them this week before December 23rd. Again, as of today, we do not have that. If there's an issue with quorum, we certainly don't want them to be expecting there to be a meeting, and then there isn't as well. So that's the other potential scheduling issue. So I'll, again, as it stands now, we have nothing in the office as an application for the 23rd.
Okay. Well, when we took the straw poll last week, we came up just about half and half as far as who would be available and who would not be available. So we would be, we would have a quorum, but it would be close, so if someone said they would be available but wasn't, wouldn't be planning on attending, we would have a problem. So, and again, as of now, we do not have any items on the agenda, so I would open it up for discussion. Do you want to try and meet that, give them the opportunity, or do we want to just go ahead now and cancel the meeting? I had a couple, I think, that said even though they could be there, they really didn't want to be, so.
About refreshments? It's kind of...
Is it incentive to come in that week? So, we can all get together afterwards. Spread a little Christmas cheer or something.
I suggest we just cancel those.
My first inclination was to go ahead and cancel the meeting, because again, we don't have anything yet, and it is two days before Christmas, there's going to be a lot of people out of town, it's going to be, it's just not really a good timing for most people, I don't think.
I think it would be better to inform the applicant in advance than to get to the meeting if we're just counting on six to be here, to make a quorum, and somebody's unable to make it, and you have to cancel or postpone or reschedule because of the lack of the quorum.
Then they can get the full enjoyment of all of us.
Yep.
All right, well then, let's just assume that meeting is canceled.
All right, thank you. The next meeting then would be January 13th. So, we will inform, we speak with O'Reilly Development, I know the Walnut Street Business Center at Walnut, Amsted Parkway, that area. So I said some road there, looking at possible vacation of some right-of-way with Magellan in that area. And I have spoken with that property owner, and they were anticipating being ready... And I have spoken with that property owner, and they were anticipating being ready, but it didn't seem as though there was any dire need to have it before January. So we'll just confirm that with both of them, and if there are any critical issues, we'll certainly get in touch with folks and see what options are. There is a fifth Monday, should the 23rd be unavailable, and the 30th is a possibility. Again, not, not locking anybody into that, just saying there is kind of an open Monday if need be, if there was some sort of, you know, pre-end of the year, you know, pre-December 30th and 1st. I'm not sure how all these businesses operate, but there may be some sort of, you know, checklist or.
If we run into something like that, we can, we can revisit this through email.
So there are opportunities. If 23rd doesn't work, 30th is open, so there's some flexibility there for better or worse, so.
Right now, let's leave it at planning and cancel.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to announce, discuss? I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that the Historical Society is having their annual Holiday Homes Tour Friday evening and all day Saturday. Tickets are available at the museum. There are four other homes available for touring, all decorated. One of our main fundraisers of the year, so we would encourage everybody. If you haven't noticed, the Stucco's up on the depot. Everybody drive by. They actually have, it's going to be lit here right after the holidays, so it's coming right along, actually. Looks very, very nice, so. That move was a good thing. That being said, if nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Have a Merry Christmas.